Okay, welcome to another edition of the Above the Bridge Podcast. I'm your host Thaddeus Park. First thing I want to do is shout out our sponsors. Shout out to Defend Hawaii. They just sent me a bunch of new shirts, a hoodie for my daughter and a pareo. So shout out to Defend Hawaii for always taking care of me and Above the Bridge Podcast. Go check them out at their website. They got a whole bunch of new stuff, a new spring line. Go check them out. They're gonna have some new summer drops as well. DefendHawaii.com. If you use promo code ATBPod upon checkout, you'll receive 15% off your entire purchase order. Next, we have iRep Detail Supply and they're getting ready to open up a new shop in Las Vegas. Right now, their shop is in Kahaloo, Temple Valley Shopping Center. Go check them out. They have everything you need to detail your car, waxes, polishes. I just used one of their buffers that I got from my dad to polish my truck and now it's looking cherry. So go check it out. iRepDetailSupply.com, promo code ATBPod upon checkout, and you'll receive 15% off your entire purchase order. Next, we have Hawaii Candy Factory and it's the Noms, the snacks you see all over the place, all over the islands. They're at every craft fair, every supermarket, basically. Go check them out. Hawaii Candy Factory, promo code ATBPod upon checkout, you'll receive 10% off your entire purchase order. Last, we have our Hawaii Medical Mushroom Company. It's Hawaii Medicinal Mushroom. If you check them out on their website, medmushroomhigh.com, they have four different tinctures of extracted mushrooms. Lion's mane, turkey tail, chaga, and also the red reishi. Go check them out. Each one of these tinctures have different medicinal properties. It's beneficial for neurological, for sleep, immune system. Go check them out. Each mushroom has something different for your medicinal needs. So go check them out. MedMushroomHigh.com, promo code ATBPod upon checkout, you'll receive 45% off your entire purchase order. Make sure you use all capitals, ATBPod.com. Aloha. Okay, this week on my episode of Above the Bridge Podcast, somebody that I always admired, somebody I wanted to have on my show since I started, and I don't know, I'm super stoked that he's here. You know him as a comedian. He was on the Lenai and Augie Show and now he's a politician and comedian still yet. Augie T, what's up, man? Thank you for being on my show, man.
Big fan. Look, we know each other now for, when was, when did I do Arrange? Maybe about 10 years ago?
No, it was more than that, bruh.
Really?
Yeah, my daughter's 13 and that was way before she was born.
15, 16 years ago. Yeah, so no, so I watched. I know it was good, but you know, I'm a, I'm a fan. Because anytime, you know, you can educate the public, you know, through social media, podcasts like yours. You know, I, I feel like it's so, so helpful because if there's anything that I've learned the last, you know, almost four years as a public servant is that, man, we just really need to educate the public a lot. Because that way, people understand the difference between city, state, federal, and why it's so important for you to get out there, register, but really, you know, be involved in your community and, and get into the know. Because once you do that, you know, I believe, because I'm very optimistic, that a lot can change. You know, not only in our city, but in our state. And at the end of the day, you know, we all want to be able to live here, raise our family, and you know, say like, hey, we did our best, right? So that's why, like, I'm a fan, like I said, and I'm excited to be on your podcast.
Right on, bruh. I appreciate that. And yeah, I've been kind of advocating, especially now, because of the community I live in, in Kaniui, it's, it's changing. And for me personally, I've been here my whole life, so I've seen the good, the bad, and how it is now. I feel like we're not improving situations and I, I feel like the community is losing itself of community. And it's, it's kind of disappointing. My daughter plays for a volleyball club in Waianalo. And their sense of community is, is still solid. It's, it's, it's very strong. And I wish Kaniui would get back to that. And I see what you're doing and I see how you're involving the community. And bruh, it's been a breath of fresh air. Just this past, what, week or something? You guys did the, um, the cleanup and stuff like that. I got so much questions for you, bruh, but first of all, like, you're District Nine. Where is that located? Like, what is District Nine?
Okay, so District Nine is Eva Waipahu. So that's it. Eva Waipahu, which is a really big district. So when you look at the city council mapping of districts, looks small. But because we have a dense community in Waipahu, there's a lot of humans, a lot of needs, right? And like you were saying, you know, I think one of the ways we're gonna solve the problem is, I've always felt like government was a hand up, not a hand out. You know, there's a lot of challenges, so we either going get involved and find ways to work with government so I can help advocate, you know, to strengthen our communities. Because what I've learned the last three years is that people like help. But I always knew this. A lot of people didn't know prior to me running for office that I've always been involved in community, you know? And I always felt and believed that when you work with public, private, nonprofit, man, can't go wrong, especially with good-hearted people that want to make a change. You can get a lot done. The God's honest truth that is that a lot of people burnt out. A lot of people burnt out because, you know, when they see or hear things on the news or on social media, it looks so doom and gloom, right? It's like, what? What, you know, and the, and I can understand why. I can understand why people feel burnt out because, you know, for so long, maybe something was neglected. You know, why, why aren't we having enough police officers out there to make sure that our city safe? How come the parks look the way it does? You know, what happened? Because the, like, I'm 56 and I remember our parks was amazing. You know, I, I felt safe. I felt like, man, that is one place where still free, where families can go and understand, learn the values of relationship, of competing. So, you know, as the Parks Chair, you know, in the City and County, it breaks my heart when we cannot fund making sure that all our parks, you know, is well manicured, taken care of, and, you know, we can staff, you know, our departments. That's what our challenge right now, you know? So if you're watching and you're looking for a job, the city and county is hiring. You know, I know you can go anywhere. You can go private. You can make more money. I get it. But man, you know, come, check us out, you know? And we need, we need good people that willing to serve and wanna come work for the county.
I know. That's one thing you messaged me on Instagram when I had my post about the canals that, which kind of took me by surprise that you said that there were a lot of openings in the city and county. And it's hard to get work done if nobody's filling those positions. I, I had no idea. It's something that I definitely went over my head. I didn't know until you mentioned it. And I was like, wow, maybe there's something you could speak on so that people could come and, and I'm, there's a lot of people wanting jobs, especially after the pandemic. So it'd be a good opportunity to, to check it out. I'm sure they get good benefits, right?
Absolutely. Look, 3,000, that's how much. Yeah. So, you know, clearing up our streams and guys, the reality is that, you know, when we litter and we're not taking care of streams and we're allowing those things to happen. You know, we love talking about saving the planet. We love to, look, we, we collected over 50,000 pounds of trash. It's ridiculous. Like, when you go on refuge center that is five minutes away.
Yeah.
Right? And now you're refuge center in all these different districts. You can go look and go, oh, okay, get cameras. Okay, I can go there right now and, and drop off. Or understanding that Carter City and County for bulk mail. When is, when do I have to do bulk, bulk rubbish pickups? Can you come? What is the date? Like, I get it, we live busy lives. But at the end of the day, you love your community enough to say, look, I, I want my, my place clean. I grew up in public housing, so why am I so passionate about cleaning my community? When I was growing up in public housing, had no idea I was poor until I got a little older. I went, how come my money look different from everybody else? That's because, no, my dad, my neighbors, we took pride where we lived. Our yards were clean and if you were cutting your grass, you know what we did? My dad would go, go cut the neighbor's grass.
Yep, exactly.
Everything looked clean, beautiful, had no idea. I was living in public housing. And I get it, it's not the same. Mom and dad gotta work hard. But we can either use that as an excuse or we can teach our children the, the values of why it's so important to take care of where you at and where you live. So, you know, a lot of challenges, a lot of things in the city and county is complex. But, you know, I'm a very optimistic person. I ran because I was pissed off. 56 years old, I'm going, why? How come? And I got into be a part of amazing conversations the last, and I'm still learning. I feel like I'm the most blessed person, man, that I get to sit there and listen and go, hmm. And, you know, feed off of my staff who, amazing, they all come in with a special skill in policy, community involvement. Augie, this is what I think we need to do. Educate me. Educate me so I can educate the public. That's why I'm so thankful that we're having this discussion because we need more dialogue like this, you know?
Yeah. What I thought was super amazing was the fact, because of what you were talking about earlier, the cleanup behind Waipahu School where people were dumping trash there, was the fact you got the community to come and take care of their community. And I always thought, like, people would do that. I would do that. We just need one, one direction or one leader or, I feel like the people of Hawaii have each other's back if we have an opportunity to. And how hard was it to get the community involved and, and to get people to volunteer? And because it, it looked like, like you said, it was choke, choke rubbish, man. And like to get, you had to get dirty. I'm sure you guys was all sweating and busting on call and, it, it was work, but that sense of community was there. And I mean, not to sound bad, but I was a little bit jealous, bruh. I want that in my community. How hard was it to get that going and get people involved?
You know, believe it or not, government want to help. You know, again, like you said, you know, who's gonna lead the pack when it comes to saying, hey, what do I need to do to help clean my stream? You know, it's a, it's a phone call. I had no idea. When I first got in, that's like, I gotta go do this. And there's still steps and you want to work with the city. Because, you know, you want to say to them like, hey, I'm willing to partner, help me. I know that's your job. I know there's challenges, but man, I, this is what I know. There's a lot of people that want to come volunteer. Again, you're right, they just need a direction, you know? And I live in an amazing district and I'm pretty sure there's a lot of people in Kaniui would love to do the same thing. A lot of people in Waianalo, a lot of people in Hawaii Kai, a lot of people in Kalii that would love to do the same thing. Think about this, man. If we all took five minutes every day to do something around, you know, our home, our neighborhood, everybody, the five minutes to volunteer, I believe there can be change.
Yeah.
I honestly believe that. But the reality is that, you know, if we're gonna do something like what you're concerned about the stream and when it rains, man, the backup, the, the challenges of flooding. But like, if we don't understand or people don't understand why it's important to, you know, keep it, you know, clean or we're not really, you know, talking to your representative to making sure that the mayor understands because it's a big, big task.
Yeah.
But it's on people's mind. It's on every director's mind that we need to do stream cleaning. Because we don't want all that opal going into the ocean.
Yeah.
We don't want, you know, flooding because of backup and, you know, overgrown weeds and we don't. But you have an administration, I believe, that's concerned about that, but you know, why are we at where we at? You know, we can blame the last 20 years.
Yeah.
Or we can go, okay, stop pointing fingers. Let's try to find real answers to, yes. And I, and I think it's honestly working with good people in our community that, you know, want to take back. I'm doing this thing called Win Back Waipahu. I'm pretty sure, maybe you've seen it.
Yeah.
And it's basically, I'm getting, before I bring in the community, I'm working with churches, small businesses and nonprofit. And all we're doing is working one block at a time. So you get, you know, like, you know, we get Seafood City in Waipahu.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just that block, we gets, you know, churches, we have a nonprofit, where the small businesses in that shopping center, the Pa'ou Shopping Center. And we're doing, what we do is just walk the block every month and letting the community know, people around that, you have people that concerned about the well-being of their center. But we get a community policing guy, Kaipo Paiva, that will help us identify. How do we, um, not like target homelessness, but like, what do we do to detour? Maybe lights, right, on your building, maybe cameras, maybe shutting down one area. How about this? All those abandoned cars, right, I'm up, getting towed today, nobody's inside sleeping. Because I think, if you know what I mean, but we allow people to sleep on the streets.
Yeah.
Anyway, but like, if we, look, if I cannot find shelters for them, what we gonna do?
Yeah.
You know, we want them to go into a program, but you also gotta make it tough. You know, and making it tough means like, you, I get it, we cannot find a shelter, we gotta, we gotta, but we, we gotta find you places, but we also gotta think about the taxpayer. You know, that concern about my, about my business, you know? I cannot just lay around over here. So we gotta find that balance. And I think telling the community that there's businesses, churches, nonprofits, that's, you know, willing to just go around and, and take care. I don't know how that's happening. Serious talking.
No worries, no worries.
So, you know, telling the community that, hey, this is what we're doing. And once we get it down, you know, then we can share that. And then you watch, I think they're gonna come and go, already getting, people asking, hey, how can I get involved? And it's really, on the weekend, cut the grass, manicure, letting people know like, hey, we keeping this nice and clean. Yeah, maybe doing a mural, you know, on side of, on the side of the building. So there's all these things to help. And there's people I get, police, community policing, that want to get involved and want to help the community thrive. So I am hoping that what we're doing in Waipahu, with Win Back Waipahu, would be a beacon to everywhere else that can probably get it done and do it better than me. Because at the end of the day, I don't care. Still the idea. Because I want you to thrive in your communities. I want you to get involved. Because this is a community, but you know, this is everybody's island. We share, right?
I like, I like that fact. And I like, for one, I felt like what you said, it's like, oh, and there's a problem. Everybody can spend time finding out, oh, it was because of this guy. All that time, you can find a million reasons why I get the problem. But all you gotta do is find one reason for make the solution. And that's what you guys should be focusing on. What I like about your ideas is that, for one, you're leading by example. You out there with the people. You out there, people see you doing them. Like, leading by example is always a key from how I was brought up. Two is like, you're starting off one block at a time. It's hard to look at one big picture and be like, I gotta fix that whole picture. Say, nah, I'm gonna fix that one corner. I'm gonna fix that little corner. And after a while, there's a spot in that picture that's better than what it was. And then it can grow from there. Taking one thing at a time is, is the key because else not, it's too overwhelming. And that kind of mentality is what's gonna make changes. Small changes grow into big changes and how you're handling these situations is what kind of the politicians or the people view politicians not doing. So you're shaking it up and that's, that's what I think is, is valuable. What was like the biggest eye-opener when you became a politician? Like, oh, bruh, this is crazy. Like, what is, what was the biggest eye-opener where you're like, bruh, this is messed up or this is good? Or what, what was, what was your eye-opener when you first started?
Learning abbreviations. Everything sound, sounded so alien. But again, you know, when you surround yourself with good people. And I'm still learning, you know, and I knew that I had to meet an expectation. Because I was reading what everybody was saying about me. I get it. You know what I mean? Like, but I never go in thinking, uh, that I have the solution. I went in because I wanted to serve. It's a calling. Honestly, it's really a calling. And I always tell people, what is your calling? Right now, it could be just, hey, you know, I gotta go vote. It's my right. I gotta get involved. Or if it's your calling to run, run.
Yeah.
You know, uh, for me, it has been the most amazing four years because it's everything that you think. But again, I don't live in this world that, man, so doom and gloom. It's too much of that, right? We'll fight small battles or fight good battles that, you know, we can win. Because this is what I believe in. Fifty, 56-year-old middle-aged man. The laws were created so that you and I can live in harmony. But years and years of pandering, right? Years and, you wake up one day, I say, government is like, on 56-year-old middle-aged man. I wake up every day that I tell myself, today, I'm gonna run. And I never run. Today, I'm gonna eat better, but I never do unless I go, hey, Dad, call me up. Uh, make sure that I'm running. Hey, John, call me up. Make sure that I'm eating correctly. Hey, Michelle, make sure you talk to my wife so that accountability.
Bruh, that's the word.
Right? Accountability. And I believe that government is a 55-year-old or 56-year-old overweight man, right? We've been working on problems and his problem's been happening the last 20, 30 years. And we thinking, the only way we're gonna solve that problem is by throwing more money or making bigger government. I, I guess that's not, that's not what I believe. I, I think, you know, for blame me for the problems that I pass is wrong. But I'm not gonna lie to you and go, well, you know, uh, I will make sure that, you know, you go to the neighborhood board, can I get speed up? I get them. And you wanna. Because I get plenty things, you know, the last couple of years of the council members that came before me that get projects in community, never get done. It's because we have no money. But that's years and years of saying, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this, and you never do it. So it become fat, right? For us to get out of that hole, are we gonna admit that we might have been wrong? Because I believe that people, when you're honest, and I'm not perfect, but when you're honest and you can say, guys, you know more than money, I'm not gonna promise you that.
Yeah.
I think people go, okay, I get it. But can we do it this way? To come out of that hole, after throwing money, year after year after year after year, thinking, go catch up and it never does?
Yeah.
It's very discouraging. I think people know, like, wow, you guys gonna come up with something different. You guys been doing it this way for a long time.
And not working.
Right. That's the definition of insanity. Right? Like, if we're not changing things and we keep doing things the same way and it's not working, that's insanity.
Yeah.
But again, that's why it's important to get involved and vote. And talk to the people that running for office about what they believe saying and hold them accountable. Like, call them up, hey, I, I thought you said you was gonna do this.
Yeah.
How come things are this way? Yeah. Look, I had no idea. I love making people laugh. I had no idea I was gonna be in this position where I gotta answer tough questions. And sometimes I look at people and I go, can I get back to you? Because I don't know.
Well, that's honest, bruh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right? And I'm gonna get an answer. Or, you know, you know, go take that, but you gonna get an answer from me. You're not gonna just get me pandering to you and, and making up something that is not believable. And there's good-hearted people, you know? And we gotta go find them. We gotta go find them. And, and you gotta keep your lawmakers, the people that represent you accountable.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that's all. That's all.
And I feel like a lot of the politicians need to not be self-driven and more community-driven. I know it's cliche, but a lot of politicians, they're, they're career politicians. This is, they're out to make money and I never dove into it too much. It's always, ah, just let them do their thing and hope for the best. But how you, even other politicians now shaking up the system and letting these po, career politicians know is, is not just gonna be a cakewalk. You're gonna have to show out. And I, I liked when you talked about it back in the day about that 60-something percent pay increase. And I always thought, bruh, like, every job, you should get paid or get a raise from performance base. I cannot go my boss and be like, I like going 64%. Like, they gonna be like, what have you done? Like, show me the reasons why. I felt like you were speaking on that as a, a normal person with eyes wide open. It's like, bruh, you gotta be performance-based. We gotta show what we doing before we can ask for more money. And you were so transparent and that was like the most refreshing thing as just somebody in the community looking in. And I don't know, that took some, some balls, bruh. I would have thought.
That's what, that's what people thought, but the reality is that, you know, that's what people thought but the reality is that you know one can you sleep at night knowing that there's challenges in the community I could have kept quiet and maybe get some harsh criticism but I could have easily play politician but I just felt like for three years I asked for little things in my community can I get speed humps can I get more work can I get more policemen oh short no more money and then all of a sudden it magically appears right and I know that this is an honorable job I know that it's more than eight hours of work we taking emails we taking calls but this is again a calling you know what I mean like I knew what my job description was going in it wasn't based on how many degrees I have or whether or not I understand policy you get people that do that I'm not going on the streets say cover that pothole no we have a department that does that so you know I could see why people were upset you know that sixty four percent that's why you know we doing amendments that we doing and I hope I don't know when this podcast come up but on Thursday we listening to some of the amendments to hopefully change so that we never ever get to this situation again where a commission is saying yeah sixty four percent is good based on this because this has happened over the years people don't care about that you know what I mean like oh we have to quit that with you know executives and like that's not my job description you know when I go and apply for one job I know exactly what I'm applying for you know what I mean so we hear we hear like whoa we trying to find the best and the brightest in government when has the best and the brightest fixed government and we forget that you know our founding fathers that made this law so that you and I can coexist we're regular people but they were store owners they're laborers they came in trying to help fix government and went back to doing what they do everyday guy common sense that understand the workings of your community right that get good people around them to help guide them not tell them what to do but guide based on the law right so uh for me I knew why I ran I ran because I'm a public servant you know the sad thing is that moving forward because it's already in place you know next person that get this job gets a hundred sixteen thousand
how how was it with your peers when you bring up the fact like you was you was um skeptical about it and they they're like oh bruh why is he talking about this were they were they did you have any pushback
well it looked like that right and I the God's honest truth is that um I represent my community
so you don't care
listen to what they had to say and it looked at me went bra sixty four percent I like shopping at Safeway and Foodland looking at me like how's that camera struggling but he got a hundred sixteen thousand and at the end of the day like if you think you deserve that then you should defend that and that's the problem right nobody wanted to defend that because uh it was on a recommendation from a commission that said you don't need to defend that anymore we are determining what you make to protect you you know well we all know that money is taxpayers money say it's not political that's a big lie it is it's taxpayers money so that's what we trying to change and I'm hoping that people can get involved I did my best to stop it and you know now
you even run run one suit and everything
so we can you know hopefully this will never come up again and you know uh we've learned from the challenges and we see that people are paying attention they're watching you just cannot do stuff like that anymore because people concerned man that's hey it's not it's not my money how is that even possible what I I cannot question you so you know I'm hoping that you know that we because of this there's good dialogue and then you know again this is a very honorable job and I don't judge my colleagues you know uh I'm just doing I'm here because I representing my community and my community is upset about a lot of things sixty four percent raise why there's nobody riding rail how come my parks not clean you know why aren't we uh ticketing illegal parking you know in our streets you know so you know we gotta go and we gotta do our best to 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 listen
saying yes that's the biggest key not not telling the community what but hearing the community how they feel I think that's the biggest key and it's good to know get ethical people in 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 the in the positions that you guys are in it helps to know that people actually care and actually fight for not what's good or right but for what people deem as common sense i- it's pretty kinda common sense you know what I mean it's like how is this happening and and people like what what you gonna do you know what I mean is the government you cannot what you gonna do shake it up but step by step making moves and getting people aware but mostly what you just said listening and being a voice for what you hear that's that's I think is the biggest key and I think you're doing a good job I think in the small timeframe you've shaken up a lot of things and got a lot of media and because of who you are and your social media it puts a spotlight on what you're doing and you're using that to your advantage to bring eyeballs and I think that's such a such a cool thing how has your social media been helping with what you're doing
so I answer your question with uh question back so how is my social media help get the message you know that's a small platform you know if I can get the ninety three thousand people watching involve in voting I call up the Chi who the Chi who's are we all Chi who but are we voting are we voting there's over five hundred thousand registered voters but only a third vote
one third well I I feel like it's it's getting easier too with the mailing votes and all that kinda stuff like I I do it I mail in my vote and I feel like when I was younger it wasn't as important to me and it it was my right that I wasn't taken advantage of I feel when I got older especially when I have a daughter it's like I may not make a big difference when I vote for the president or like that kinda stuff but I can make a difference who I vote for who gonna be running my kani oi and I think as younger adults when you have got that opportunity you need to be aware of your right and your voice and your ability to take advantage of it I don't know how you can create a s- a situation where kids or like young adults would be like yeah I gotta do it but I think using social media is one way because everybody's on social media especially those young adults you know what I mean
no we have to really honestly and I'm looking at you and I know you have a lot of followers like if you really want change you really need to vote that is the only way right now and you gotta find people who you think is gonna represent and listen to the concerns that you have in your community and I think a lot of people don't because they haven't seen a lot of change and you feel like I'm sorry you know when people say thank you Augie for doing what you did it tells me that we have lost faith in government you know what I mean like go and encourage your neighbor to vote it takes minutes to register online and to vote you know what I mean uh but we don't do it man over five hundred thousand registered voters
I didn't know it was just one third but that's that's
like only like I think a hundred thirty something thousand voted yeah it was the lowest percentage in the nation you know what I mean and in plenty you know I mean we complain a lot um but unless you take action and that is encouraging your friends to vote or you again leading by example and saying okay I'm gonna start complaining we hear it every time right no complaint right but you gotta do it it's like you said it comes to your house circle you know and reminisce on how I used to take tests in school
yeah the scantron
yes go in a circle and then send them out you know what I mean so I start making it make an excuse you want change you've gotta vote that's it
so when you get um when you're met in public and stuff what has been the biggest question people been coming up to you and be like hey Augie what's the biggest what has been the biggest question people ask you
I used to hate it when people go hey tell me a joke you know because they you know like comics they can just walk over hey bro tell me a joke we not do that with police hey bro go arrest my friend I kinda miss that I did like the sewage I'm gonna know about the streams I I miss hey can you tell me a joke no man uh I stop and talk to everyone and I have fun conversation I have serious conversation uh and that's why I'm enjoying what I do it's tough work I'm not gonna pretend that it's not hard it's hard but man what like to be fifty six and doing all the things that I've done as a comedian radio guy dad husband you know serving the public doing your best to try to understand how to make this community better has been the most amazing uh four years you know and man there's so much more that I wanna do I wanna see Win Back Waipahu be so cool that people go you know that it becomes a beacon so that other communities can do what we did man I would love to see our parks in ever so pristine that people go how you did that you know uh community policing people getting involved walking you know uh man until you know we can hire more police officers I gonna let you guys know if you're a young man and lady and you never do anything kolohe consider being a police officer we giving incentives secondly Hawaii is still a safe place to live we see the craziness on social media but the reality is that we still live in a safe place and crime actually going down you know and I just think the narrative and how we treated police the last couple of years and we all know get bad eggs everywhere we go but I did it right along and people are so disrespectful you know what I mean like they are cousins but I shop at the same store they go to the same games as you and yet you treat them with disrespect you know uh man it's still a very honorable job I remember like when you were growing up you know a teacher would ask you would you like be and everybody wanted to be either president or policeman or fireman right now everybody wants to be YouTube stars I was served that way I was served that way I go not a great way community you love doing something honorable man you know raise your family you know uh know that you giving back and again it's still safe go talk to you know a couple people go talk to the highest paid city employee the medical examiner and he'll tell you why we cannot get quality you know uh examiners in Hawaii you know why we don't have enough homicides
that's a good thing huh
you know the news you know they gonna report all the crazy bad stuff how about reporting all the cool stuff that's
that's what that's what honestly in social media I wish there was more of that that's why I like certain ones I mean always get those things that highlight the negativity negativity equals clicks clicks equals followers and that's what people are drawn to I like the aloha I like the good feels like I I get I'm at work and I'll see something like oh when more when Marine comes home and surprises his daughter and oh I get chicken skin when the daughter just oh it's like that kinda stuff I like not the kind tree brothers licking one one dude but on all away you know what I mean it's like that that's that's not the content that I like to indulge myself in it's fun for a second but doesn't make me feel good you know what I mean I think
and you know again we live in a society like you said clicks right how do I draw attention you know I I'm gonna be honest with you uh I might put something that's cool you know like a cleanup and I get views but if I'm talking to my mom and something really outlandish I get more hits yeah or put one of my old comedy clips I get more hits you know so I know we have good people that live here I know I believe that with all my heart you know um the narrative have changed and you know I I you know I am like again I'm optimistic I believe that we can you know look how we look how we come together when we wanna make somebody win American Idol
exac- exactly like bruh that's exact my point exactly and I I know the strength in the community and the island is with the people because of one thing how many years they've been saying we cannot have fireworks on New Year's Eve the people have spoken cuz you go anywhere on New Year's Eve it's a war zone if the if the community not like that community took a stance they don't care what the government says they they blowing up the neighborhood if they're that strong with something like that they can be that strong with something like cleaning the the sewage systems or clean the canals or clean the parks you that strong the people get the strength you get all these people that's way stronger than the people saying you cannot do something cuz that's that's proof right there I always thought of that I always thought of that
and the reality is that you know one it's legal but like you said yeah and I just don't want it you know popping at October twenty seven October twenty seven the people that that's what they worried about that's why I always plead every year it's not popular I just ask hey if you live in my district the kupuna the vets our animals no coming you know minutes before New Year's but what is the relevancy of November second
You guys get to win the kind Max Fight or Pacquiao Fight, but they win and that's it, bruh.
Oh, we doing it, celebration of life. You know, uh.
Gender reveal.
Everything, everything, so you know, you know, we gotta follow laws, laws are, look. If we all follow laws, oh, you know, and, and, and part of it is our fault too, because we don't enforce it. Right, if we start enforcing, maybe we get the lawlessness stuff, you know. But unfortunately, man, hard, right, when you haven't been enforcing. So, you know, we gotta do a better job and, you know, I don't know what the solution for fireworks, I thought, what if we made it legal? See, cuz right now it's illegal and if. The only way you can prosecute somebody is if you film them and you see them actually lighting the fireworks.
Right, you just gotta go on Instagram, they doing them themselves.
You know what I mean, if that person will show up at court, it gets dropped, right? But if you made it legal and there's ways or places you gotta do them. Go get nuts, go spend, but you gotta do them in safe places. Have a good time, but if the cop now comes on your street. And they see a bunch of party, can just go, hey, let me see your permit, you know more permit, hey. You got a fine, you know, you gotta pay the fine, hey, have a good time, but you're doing illegal illegally. I don't know, I don't know what the solution is, you know, uh. I just know that people that complain about it know it's coming. Don't do it at three o'clock in the afternoon, they're watching this guy walking his dog. But that's what I'm talking about, you know, it's not, it's not me, you know, trying to be da-da-da-da. I'm just saying, no, we gotta be mindful of our people in the community, you know, uh. If we live in this place called aloha, the aloha state, they must show off.
Exactly, we gotta be the beacon, bruh, we gotta be the.
Yes, there you go, exactly that.
On a lighter side, um, while you're being a councilman. You're still running your shows, bruh, how are you finding not only the time and balance to do your shows? But come up with new material, cuz like you were talking earlier, bruh, that being a comic is probably one of the most hardest stressful things. Cuz when one joke bomb in the room comes silent, eh, eh, all eyes on you, that must, I don't know, right, that's, that's nuts. Like, I, I feel like, how do you balance and doing that? And you've brought a lot of joy and laughter to people in Hawaii and that's what. Um, that's the way you show your aloha through laughter, but how has it been now, like, like balancing it all?
No, thank you for that question, uh, I think from day one, I told people. On my website, if you look, you can do everything that you love doing and you can serve your community. You know what I mean, and like, I wear several different hats. I love waking up in the morning and I love being on radio. I love the aspect of, you know, putting smiles on people's faces while they driving to work. I don't talk politics because I gotta deal with politics after I leave the radio station, right? Uh, and then I, I work hard at where, uh, people elected me to be at. And I'm trusting and I know they're hoping that I'm listening and I'm doing all the things that I said I was gonna do. And I take that serious, but on a weekend, just like you, I need a place to go and. Take care of this, I need the help, and believe it or not, I need it more than you.
I believe it.
I need to get on stage, I need to vent, I need to be Augie. The comedian and. You know, when you come and you expecting me to talk about, I'm not, because I don't wanna even, I'd. I leave that there. You know what I, I've never done an act where I just talk politics, nobody wants that, they wanna hear stories. Your crazy family, tell me about why, you know, that made you laugh. You know, tell me about why it's so frustrating being a comic now. You know, I'm working on my next special, it's called, uh, I Was Famous Before the Internet. And, uh, how I felt like I was a, I was, I was woke way before wokeness came to be. You know, I probably was canceled several times and I'm talking about just that process. You know, uh, how, you know, no one, if people complain, but. You, you had an option, you're not crying, oh my god, I'm still talking about that. You know what I mean, like, you don't like it, turn the station. You don't like this podcast, don't watch it.
Exactly.
Right, if you come into a comedy club, don't expect the comic to be politically correct. Because there's a law that I believe in called the First Amendment, the freedom of speech. And I've never been offensive and I understand the value of. When you're talking, speech that is hurtful because you have a malicious heart? Or you're just saying something because that's actually true.
Sometimes the truth is more funny.
Exactly, but you know, the truth also hurt.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you cannot take it, then you shouldn't be in a club. And it's sad when guys come in, you know, they ring their phone to see. If this guy is saying something that's outlandish, that we're gonna have to cancel him. It's sad, people come to a comedy show because they're trying to escape, just like I'm trying to escape when I'm on stage. You know, I live, I live a stressful life and I love being on stage and it keeps me young. It keeps me in touch with the community, uh. It keeps me connected to the people that followed my career for the last thirty-five years, so, you know, uh. I, I cannot complain, man, I, you know, you can still do everything you love doing and you can serve your community. And that's the message, didn't change. You know, because I became this public servant.
I think, I think your comedy is one of the ways you share your personal aloha. And I think that's, that's, you need that, you need to show your aloha, you need people to receive it. You need people to smile and get that break from life. When you laughing, you're not thinking about, oh, I gotta, I gotta clean the yard tomorrow, I gotta go work the next day. For that moment, you just, in the moment, you laughing. And that's your way of showing Augie's aloha, that's the way, that's the way you show aloha and, bruh, you can't stop.
I get guys tell me, hey, what you do, the things that they're doing, you know, with their phones and I'm like, I'm fifty-six years old. You know, I did those things and I actually had to pay for, now you can, you can do them off your camera. You know, you can take the satire of, uh, things that's happening and put it on your camera and do it. I, it's no more time for that, you know what I mean, and, uh, you know, I'm talking to your parents. I'm talking to, you know, that high school student that, you know, you're watching, that's doing the. I, I did all of that.
Yeah, you need volv.
And I, and I, I appreciated the time and I, you know, sometimes I'm that old guy and I go, man, if the internet wasn't. What's happening when I was doing this twenty years ago, oh man, I'll be selling out arenas. You know, but like, well, you know, you, you, you just don't know, but like, man, I did what I did during that time. I cannot complain, you know what I mean, and I see guys like, you know, Tamua or. How's this guy or the guys that's currently, you know, uh, blowing things up, making people laugh. And I go, that's the evolution of comedy now.
How do you, how do you, how do you see, how do you see the, the state of comedy in Hawaii? And, and are you happy with how it's moving forward?
Look, I think whenever there's stupidity, there's an opportunity to be funny. So, it's evolving, you know what I mean, when you see what's happening in life and the stupidity. How can you not find laughter in that, you know, so it's evolving, you know, uh. I, I, I think it's, I think it's wonderful, I think that, you know, I'm hoping. You know, I pay, you know, homage for the, to the guys that I looked up to, you know, uh. That made me laugh, guys like Rap Rap Linger, you know, Richard Pryor, you know, all these guys. All the old school guys that make me laugh and, and inspired me and, you know, uh. I'm hoping that the youngins, the guys that doing it right now, they understand, you know, where they came from. You know, I was told growing up that, you know, you shouldn't speak pigeon because, you know, you cannot connect. And yet, now, what's the coolest accent? It's just on the news, pigeon. You know, and that's why, like, I stayed firm and it goes, I used to get that a lot, how do you do comedy on the mainland? Do you change your hat, you speak, no, because I always felt like we bring a special. Something to the world. Not only do people like to come here because we have amazing, beautiful sights, but, but we're so unique. And what is different from us to somebody in the south? You're rednecks, we're brownnecks. You know what I mean, uh, everybody has a gay cousin, everybody has a crazy uncle. Everybody have abusive mom and dad, how are you telling that story? You know, and so, is it evolving? Yeah, to, you know, the, the, the phone and how you're getting one audience. Man, I, I used to have to beg, can I come on your TV show? I have a show this week and it was word of mouth, that was all social media, right, you know that, you guys hustled, you guys put up posters.
Yeah, flyers and all that crap, yeah.
Can you imagine if we had this?
Oh, yeah. I was just talking about that, yeah.
We had to go and beg radio stations, well, you think you guys can help us out? We have to pay for all of this, you know, for put a, a, a twenty-two minute show of your thoughts. You have to pay tons of money, now, you just need patience. Editing.
Yeah, editing.
It, uh, so, it, that's, I think that's the only thing that's evolving, is the fact that it's become a lot more easier, yeah? And how are you evolving, what are you doing different from everybody else? You know, every couple of generation, you have that one guy or a couple guys that, you know, uh. Will take the reign of whatever that is, you know what I mean, and, uh, look, I'm thankful, man, thirty-five years.
Long time, yeah.
You know what I mean?
That's a lot of laughter, bruh.
Thirty-five years, so, you know, I cannot complain, uh. And if you still like come laughing, you, you like hear my perspective on life, uh, I still do it and I'm still having fun doing it.
Right on, well, we've been going for our old, one last thing I wanted to ask. And that's about your mean green machine, you giving that thing away, bruh, that's a Japanese one from Tokyo, huh, that, those things. Left-handed steering everything.
How's that, dude, it's the most, I laugh when I'm, when I'm driving this thing. Because it's so fun to drive, yeah, it's on the other side, you gotta get used to, to like, and you know, it's a stick.
Oh, it's a stick.
Wow, that vehicle, this is automatic, but like, I haven't jo- driven a stick since, you know, like, high school, so. Dude, I'm having good fun, you know, revving it, two to three, then, you know.
Drop the clutch.
It's been, it's been fun, but yeah, you can win my truck, my, my Japanese truck. Log on to JDMHawaii.com, all the rules is there and I, I, it's a simple, you go there and go test drive one. Because you might not wanna.
Drive, but you might not want them.
Right, well, meaning, meaning, might not be something that you like, but like, I'm gonna tell you, there's so much benefits to it. You know, our terrain is kinda, it's fit for those kind of cars. Why, forty miles, forty miles to a gallon.
Oh, yep.
You're saving so much money on gas. Parking, parking getting smaller, you don't notice that? I just, no problem, yeah, put them in, none, and now there's a service center. So you're not just buying them and you figuring out like, oh my gosh, what are they gonna do, no, you gonna, they gonna service center.
Oh, they get that many on the island.
Or they get one place where they can service, uh, those K trucks. So, hey, go to JD, JDM Hawaii, it's on, right across the street from Diners, go test drive and enter. This guy could have like given away any of his K truck on his lap, but he's giving mine away. Mine. You know, so go get my truck and enter, you know, uh, we'll do a drawing at the end of May and. Go a- and, and, and just go test drive and, and put your name to enter, to win my mean green machine.
Right on, man, well, I appreciate you for coming on my show and. Good luck to you in this next election and keep doing what you're doing, you are making moves. And you are leading by example and that's more than what anybody could ask for. And you're doing it with a smile and most of all, you're doing it with aloha. And like I said, that's, it all starts with one small part of the puzzle and it grows and. You that start, bruh, hopefully it grows faster and, yeah, keep making people laugh, dude, you made me laugh for. I guess thirty-five years, bruh, that's a long time.
I appreciate what you're doing and I appreciate, you know, anybody online that's trying to bring positivity. And the most important thing, information, how, you know, we can, you know, better ourselves, our community. You know, and, and, and really stand out, you know, I'm not perfect, never claimed to be perfect. You know, ask my wife, she'll tell you. I don't like that guy, you know what I mean, uh. But, you know, as long as I wake up every day and I can breathe and I get an opportunity. To, uh, try to be a better dad, you know, a better husband, a better family, a better neighbor. You know, I, I count my blessings every day, you know, I, I struggle like everybody else. I have to pay bills like everybody else, uh, I suffer from the same kind of challenges as you. And, look, I, I'm very thankful, very grateful and I will always, always honor that. And I'm so, you know, thankful to God, right? You know, I don't, I don't, I don't mean to be religious, cuz I'm not, but the reality is that, man. We are so blessed in many, many ways, whether you believe in God or not, you know, there's something greater than, you know, us. You know, uh, and waking up every day, we have an opportunity to make a difference, so. I'll end with that and, dude, I hope this has been fun, I hope this.
It's been fun, bruh, yeah.
You know, and, uh, yeah, man, my book, after this is all done, will be the most amazing book.
Oh, yep, guaranteed, bruh.
Will be the most amazing. Everybody.
You gotta start writing them already, right, you're gonna need couple chat, couple, um, couple of different volumes.
It's coming.
That's gonna be nuts, yeah, all right, well, where can people find you on social media and your website?
AugieTLive.com, AugieTLive.com, I still do weddings, bar mitzvah, funerals, divorce. Uh, I do, like I said, I have a tour coming out in September, I do a lot of shows still on the mainland. And AugieTLive.com, that's the simplest and easy way, go watch my movie. That's the simplest and easy way. Go watch my movie, Aloha Surf Hotel. It's on Amazon Prime. If you wanna laugh and gain twenty pounds to be this, uh, fat overweight surfer. Go watch the movie, you'll laugh, uh, and we win in this one. The brown wins.
Raja. And for me, as always, you can find us on Above the Bridge Podcast on Instagram. You can go to atbpod.com, our YouTube channel is Above the Bridge Podcast. And my personal Instagram is Daddy Daddy High. Right on, man. Well, shock us for the cameras. Boom. Right on, man. We're out. Shout out to the Artist Group Network. Aloha.